Thank you, Tammy. Okay, tonight we have Chris Fleming with us with the Margaret Hank. Well, first of all, we have to have a roll call. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Here.
Commissioner Gault?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kahler?
Present. Tonight, we have Chris Fleming with us from Margaret Hank Cumberland Presbyterian Church. Thank you for being here tonight to do our invocation. And our pledge of allegiance tonight is Meg Hancock, and so she'll come up right after the invocation. Thank you.
Creator God, we come before you this day, some as longtime residents with deep roots in Paducah, and some like me that are transplants. Your word tells us to seek the peace and prosperity of the cities which we live, for in its welfare we will also find welfare. To this end, I pray for our leaders that with humility and with sincerity, they would seek the goodwill of all those here in Paducah, those who live in the margins, those who are in the middle, and that they would help to strengthen our public institutions, our schools and our colleges, our police department, those in community development, all these things which make a city good to live in. May our quality of life continue to rise, and let us be right and good to one another. It's in your name we do pray these things. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Meg, thank you. And Meg is a sophomore at Paducah Tillman High School. Thank you for coming. City Manager, are there any additions or additions?
None that I'm aware of.
We have a presentation here tonight from the National Quilt Museum.
Afternoon Commissioners. You guys are a significant source of funding for the Quilt Museum, and so, once a year, I like to make sure I come and tell you where your dollars are being spent and what it's doing for the economy. This year is no exception. It's actually been a very good year for the museum. Our fiscal year goes July to June, so this is basically as of June 30th, a few months ago. And just like a number of other years, we've brought people, thousands of people from all over the world to Paducah. In fact, not only have we had people, in the year, we've had people from all 50 states and over 40 foreign countries come to the museum. But in reality, I guess some people think that that all happens in April. But in reality, in three different months, we had people from 47 states. In eight different months, we had people from 40 states. And in the other four months, we had people from 30 states. So it continues to happen all year long. There's a continual flow of people from outside this economy into the Paducah area to spend money. This year, we've grown very, very quickly. We're actually up 8% in total visitors this year versus the last fiscal year, which was actually up over the year before by 5.6%, which means that our visitors into the economy have grown slightly over 13% in the last two years, which basically goes back to when I came here. This is a significant impact on the economy, because as we mentioned, over 95% of these people come into this economy when they come to visit the museum. They use hotels, they use restaurants, they go to other places, they obviously use our shops. Just to give you a little basic idea, there's been an estimate done that 1% of the people who come to the museum in a year is worth about $75,000 in tourism dollars to the economy, which means that in $2,008, when they did this, the museum was bringing about $7.5 million a year in tourism dollars into the economy. Well, we've grown about 13% since that, which is slightly over $1 million more in dollars coming to the economy from people who are coming from around the world to see the museum. The last thing I'll add, because I know you have a big agenda, is that for everyone to keep in mind that the majority of our revenue comes from admissions and retail admissions and shop sales. We don't have one single donor who's more than 3% of our total budget for the year. In fact, the percentage of the arts money that we get from the city is our fourth-largest donor for the fiscal year I'm talking about. And every single one of you is within 1% of each other. So absolutely, we run on a very tight budget. And if you're looking at everything from an economic impact, I'll go ahead and tell you that we get about $18,000 of that money. So your $18,000 has turned into a little bit over $8 million for the city of Paducah. So I'll take any questions if you have any.
I don't have any questions, but I am sorry that I missed the opening that you had.
Oh, yeah, the event the other day, yes. At the Montgomerys.
Right, we were in Washington, but I do want to come over and take a tour of the Quilt Museum and see your new exhibit.
Yeah, there's a great exhibit that just went up. It's really nice.
Frank, would I put you on the spot?
Sure.
How many people do we talk about? How many visitors?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I actually should have said that. We're looking at about 38,000 visitors a year. And there's another thing out there that, just to put this out there, I know we've discussed it before. I guess a lot of people think that a lot of that happens during quilt show, but actually, that's not true at all. Out of that, 38,000 people in the fiscal year we're talking about, 5,100 of them happened during quilt week.
Okay.
It's just one of those things that people just kept repeating until people thought it was true. Folk war, I don't know. Anybody else?
No, thank you.
Great job.
Appreciate it, guys. Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to switch the program up a little bit, and we're going to do the Civic Beautification Board Annual Business Awards before we do the property tax hearing. So Mary, if you all will come on up, you and Paula.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Each year, the Paducah Civic Beautification Board recognizes businesses, and in this case, this year, organizations who have built new businesses, renovated, improved their property, improved their landscaping significantly. And we want to recognize those businesses tonight. And we have quite a list, because there's so much going on in Paducah, so much prosperity with our businesses. And I think you'll be impressed with hearing this all at one time, what's going on. Emmanuel Baptist Church with that devastating fire, and they could have just gone inside and worked. And if you've been there, it's beautiful. But no, they chose to improve the outside also, and it looks better than ever. And Gina Brock, please come on up. Gina is Associate Minister, and we're awful proud of what you've done. Sandra, the Paducah Area Chamber of Commerce in the old NC and St. L Railroad Depot was a welcome change to see activity and see it restored so beautifully. We love it. Thank you. St. Francis de Sales Catholic Church, Ellen Anderson, she's here representing Father Roby. He couldn't be here. The church is beautiful, the back, oh my goodness, not only the interior, but all the way around. It's just such a nice addition to downtown. Tom Garrett, the Paducah Louisville Railroad, a green technology building. We're awfully proud. Thank you. It's new construction. Hudson of Paducah, not new construction, but it sure is looking good out there, as only would be appropriate for the business that they're in. And Wade Jones is here. If you don't know where Hudson is, it's on James Sanders Boulevard, back past Sam's. Paducah Water, Glenn Anderson, we love your new construction. I particularly am fond of the tile work that looks like the river and the flowing water, so clean and bright. Thank you.
Did you manage to be responsible for that, or Bill Robertson?
Yes.
And Ricky Hill?
Thank you all. Our hotels, our hoteliers have been in Cape Girardeau all day, but I think they have sent Monica Adams, and she is the Sales Manager. And she's here for Auburn Place Hotels and Suites, which had a $1.5 million renovation, and the Holiday Inn Express, which is new construction. And we're glad to have both. These are award-winning properties. Walker Hall, Linda and David Curtis, we love what you've done with the Event Center. And you know, we may take for granted sometimes a building that's been downtown, but when you see what's been done, both outside and in, it's really wonderful. Thank you. And you say you want a revolution? All right. Independence Bank, Jefferson Square, get used to that name. Shelley Asprey, come on up. If you haven't been yet and had a tour of this building, and yes, Auburn still has a presence in there, and it's an historic corner. Coca-Cola's got a corner right now. And of course, in preparation for the concert, you-know-who is in the other corner. String Works, is Timothy Quartz here? Timothy, come on up. Thank you for bringing life to Midtown. And it is, if you haven't been by, when there's been picking and grinning on the front porch. Yes, stop by. Thank you. And last but not least, Paducah Housing Authority. Not your typical business, but you just can't believe what they've done with the stimulus money that our community received. What, 3.6 million?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
On H.C. Mathis Apartment Community, and let's see, how many? 28 units?
28 apartments.
Right next to the Paducah Parks Department on H.C. Mathis. But that's not the only thing they're doing. Anderson Court has just been renovated. And I'm sure you've got a plan to continue.
We do. And thank you very much for recognizing the Housing Authority and what we bring to the city of Paducah.
We're thankful.
Thank you.
Thank you all for what everybody does for Team Paducah.
I just wanted to thank everyone that came tonight and for all they do in Paducah. So next, we have Jonathan Perkins. And do we have to do a, no? You'll have to go out of? And John's going to present the property levy tax hearing tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and City Manager. The purpose of this public hearing is to give the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed 25.5 cent real estate tax levy. A hearing is required by the Kentucky Revised Statutes when a proposed tax rate exceeds the compensating rate, which is 24.6 cents this year. Local government is permitted to adjust the tax rate upward by 4% over the compensating rate, which is what we are proposing. Later in the regular commission meeting tonight, the proposed property tax levy ordinance will be introduced. Staff recommends that you set the city's general fund property tax levy at 25.5 cents, which is still 4.5 cents lower than it was in 2001, as shown on the chart that you have before you now. The final reading for the levy ordinance is set for September the 24th. The rate has been 25 cents for the past six years, and the half-cent increase is equivalent to a $5 increase per year for a home that's valued at $100,000. Put it in perspective that way. And that's really all I have, and so if you have any questions or the public has any comments, that's what this is for.
Are there any comments? What is the average, if you just had an average property tax across the state of Kentucky? I know it would vary according to
Well.
the size of the city, but cities compared.
Well, we recently did a survey last year, last fall, and including the city of Paducah, we found that the average rate was 26, I think it was 26.1 cent. So last year, we were below that average, those average cities surveyed, and we still remain below, based on last year's data. We don't have more recent data than that, because many cities have not yet set their rates, just like we haven't.
Any questions for John? Comments?
Well, as Jeff pointed out to me, he said, so we're talking about three cups of coffee. It's your coffee house.
Yes.
And that'd be the impact of $100,000 a house, three cups of coffee, so. I'll kick him out three cups of coffee.
Or we just won't drink the coffee and pay our property tax?
There you go. That's like a plan.
John, I thought you did a good job in the Agenda Action Forum. I mean, we do it every year, so.
We tried to.
Will some of this information be on the website? Just as Paducah ranks, just as you, the 26 points?
We can put it out there, yeah.
I just think it might be helpful for the general public to know where we are and.
Probably not a bad idea. I'm glad you asked that, because Pam Spencer will be putting out on the website shortly all kinds of information about the property tax rate and how we arrive at it, what the assessed values are. And there's always a lot of confusion in the city of Paducah, because about half the folks live in the city school district and half live in the county school district. And the city of Paducah only collects the school tax for the city, not the county. And so you could literally be across the street from somebody that's in the county versus the city, and if you compared your tax bills, if your houses were valued the same, your city tax bill would be substantially different, because the city would include the school tax rate, but the guy across the street that goes to county would not.
That explains, if I'm talking to my neighbor, why his may be different than mine.
That's very possible, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, John. Okay, we'll go on to our meeting. And Commissioner Abraham, please, with the minutes.
I move that the reading of the minutes for September 3rd, 2013, City Commission Meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved as written.
Second. Is everyone okay with the minutes?
Yes.
City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the following documents be received and filed. Insurance Certificate for Gulf Equipment Corporation, Commissioner's Deeds, 505 Fountain Avenue, 516 Walter D. Towne Boulevard, 1219 Salem Street, quitclaim deed with George M. Valmer for 228 South 17th Street, Fiscal Year 2014 Contracts for Services, Greater Paducah Economic Development Council, Inc., Paducah McCracken County Senior Citizens, Paducah Junior College, Inc., the Paducah School of Art, Paducah Junior College, Inc., the Community Scholarship Program, Barclay Regional Airport, Maiden Alley Cinema, Paducah Transit Authority, Contracts and Agreements, Agreement with Ohio Machinery Company for the purchase of a trauma-portable screening plant, 2013-2014 Interlocal Agreement Regarding Kentucky Division of Waste Management Recycle Grant Award, 2013-2014 Interlocal Agreement Regarding Kentucky Division of Waste Management Hazardous Household Waste Grant Award, Engineering Public Works Department Change Order for the Riverfront Redevelopment Project Phase 1A Piles and Mass Fill, Gault's Letter of Approval of Pricing for the Paducah Police Department for the BP-837 Python DX Threat Level 2 Armor, Notice of Cancellation for Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah for 5:30 PM Tuesday, September 10th, 2013.
Second.
Any discussion? City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. We'll go on to municipal orders. Commissioner Rhodes, please.
On the recommendation of the City Manager of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Paducah, order the personal changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. Active in the Human Resources Department, I'd like to draw your attention to three retirements we have. One in the Police Department, Michael Seemack has been with us for 18 years. In the Fire Department, we have David Jeffords with more than 24 years of service, and Tommy Morgan with 21-plus years of service. So I'd like to acknowledge them.
Well, we want to congratulate them on their retirement and for the years of service with the City of Paducah. We appreciate it. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that a municipal order entitled, "A Municipal Order to Reuse $125,000 in Repaid Economic Development Bond Funds, Approved that the Kentucky Cabinet for Economic Development to be used as an economic incentive to Whitehall Industries to aid in the purchase of one aluminum extrusion press, which will assist in the location of Whitehall Industries to Paducah be adopted."
Second.
City Manager, do you want to speak on this?
We, I think we're all aware of the success we have had in economic development, and Whitehall Industries is one of those that is in the process of building construction and start up before too long. The city, to date, has not been a participant in the incentive package for Whitehall. This is an opportunity for us to become involved through the redirection, I guess if you will, of what had formerly been funds granted by the state of Kentucky to a local business that have been effectively surrendered because of non-performance with the grant conditions. The state of Kentucky has given the city the opportunity to request reuse of those funds, and that is what we are doing on behalf of the Whitehall Project. Without getting into the complexities of the project financing, this use of these funds will fill a gap that had come about unexpectedly in the local funding or incentive package for Whitehall. So it's a very important thing, and I think a very appropriate use of these monies that the cabinet has made available to the city.
Just clarifying, it's money that was paid to the state by a company that did not fulfill their incentives. The state is bringing this, giving this money to Paducah for us to allow to use with Whitehall.
That's correct.
Any comments? All right. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Ordinances adoptions. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Approving the Recommendation of the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to Accept the Bid of D and Deconstruction for Construction of a New Home at 1403 Monroe Street, and Authorizes the Mayor to Execute a Contract for Same." This ordinance is summarized as follows. That the City of Paducah approves the recommendation of the Urban Renewal and Community Development Agency to accept the bid of D and Deconstruction in the amount of $127,370 for the construction of a new home at 1403 Monroe Street as part of the 2012 home project. Further, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute a contract with D and Deconstruction for the construction of the new home.
Second. Another nice home in Fountain Avenue.
Yes. The neighborhood's looking great.
It is. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, Authorizing the Issuance of City of Paducah, Kentucky General Obligation Bond Series 2013A in the approximate aggregate principal amount of $1,115,000, subject to a permitted adjustment increasing or decreasing the principal amount of Series 2013A bonds up to $110,000 for the purpose of financing a portion of the cost of renovations and improvements to a municipal pool in the City of Paducah, Kentucky, and to City of Paducah, Kentucky taxable general obligation bond, Series 2013B, in the approximate aggregate principal amount of $2,485,000, subject to a permitted adjustment increase or decreasing the principal amount of Series 2013A bonds by up to $245,000 for the purpose of financing a portion of the cost of the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of various economic development projects in the City of Paducah, Kentucky, approving the forms of bonds, authorizing designated officers to execute and deliver the bonds, authorizing and directing the filing of notice with the state, local debt officer, providing for the payment and security of the bonds, creating bond payment funds, maintaining the heretofore established sinking fund, authorizing acceptance of the bids of the bond purchasers for the purchase of the bonds, and repealing inconsistent ordinances. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes the issuance of general obligation bonds designated as Series 2013A in the approximate principal amount of $1,115,000, the Series 2013A bonds, and Series 2013B in the approximate principal amount of $2,485,000, the Series 2013B bonds, and together with the Series 2013A bonds, the bonds by the City of Paducah, Kentucky, the city. The bonds are to be issued for the purpose of financing the cost of various projects within the city, including the renovation and improvement of a municipal pool, the 2013A project, the construction of improvements to an industrial distribution facility located within the city to be leased to a Kentucky subsidiary of Maco Organics Incorporated, a Canadian corporation for use in furtherance of economic development within the city, and the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of an approximately 30,000-square-foot building to be located on property being leased jointly by the city and the county of McCracken, Kentucky, the county, and to be subleased to Teletext Services Corporation, a Colorado corporation, for use and furtherance of economic development within the city, collectively the 2013B project, and together with the 2013A project, the projects. Provisions are made in the ordinance for the payment of the bonds and the security therefore, for the application of the proceeds of the bonds, for the establishment of bond payment funds, for the maintenance of the previously established sinking fund, and for certain covenants of the city with respect to the bonds. The bonds are to be sold at public competitive sale and shall mature or be subject to mandatory sinking fund redemption in varying amounts on September 1st of each of the years 2014 through 2028. The bonds pledge the full faith and credit of the city, and provision is made for the collection of a tax to pay the principal of and the interest on the bond, subject to certain credits as provided in Section 8 of the ordinance, as required by KRS 83A.060. The following Section 7 of the ordinance is set forth in its entirety. Section 7, General Obligation. The bonds shall be full general obligations of the city, and for the payment of said bonds and the interest thereon, the full faith, credit, and revenue of the city are hereby pledged for the prompt payment thereof. During the period the bonds are outstanding, there shall be and there hereby is levied on all the taxable property in the city, in addition to all other taxes, without limitation as to rate a direct tax annually in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of and interest on the bonds when and as due, it being hereby found and determined that current tax rates are within all applicable limitations. Said tax shall be and is hereby ordered, computed, certified, levied, and extended upon the tax duplicate and collected by the same officers in the same manner and at the same time that taxes for general purposes for each of the said years are certified, extended, and collected. Said tax shall be placed before and in preference to all other items and for the full amount therefore provided, however, that in each year, to the extent that the other lawfully available funds of the city are available for the payment of the bonds, including amounts available under the lease and are appropriated for such purpose, the amount of such direct tax upon all of the taxable property in the city shall be reduced by the amount of such other funds so available and appropriated.
Second.
All right. We talked about this last week, and it's for a couple of really good economic development prospects and a beautiful new pool that we have now. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kahler?
Aye. And by the way, Commissioner Gault, good job.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rhodes, please.
All right. I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor to Execute Change Order Number 1 with Bluegrass Fire Equipment Company and Pierce Manufacturing Incorporated for the purchase of two triple-combination pumper trucks for use by the city fire department and authorizing the mayor to execute said change order number 1." This order is summarized as follows. The city approves change order number 1 with Bluegrass Fire Equipment Company Incorporated and Pierce Manufacturing Incorporated with an increased amount of $3,366 for additions to two triple-combination pumper trucks for the use of the city fire department, increasing the total cost price to $835,720.
Second. Okay. City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Harper Construction LLC for the construction of the Greenway Trail Phase II project, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the city of Paducah accepts the bid of Harper Construction LLC in the amount of $672,502.45 for construction of the Greenway Trail Phase II project, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract with Harper Construction LLC for construction of the Greenway Trail Phase II project.
Second.
That'll be good. We'll have, how many miles then of Greenway Trail? Rick, how many miles?
More than I can jog.
Or Mark, how many, how many? Al? Great. So, you can get an an mile walk in? All right, good. Or a bike ride? City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a professional service agreement with Malcolm Engineering LLC for the design services and construction administration for the final phase for the Julian Carroll Convention Center renovation project. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the mayor of the city of Paducah is hereby authorized to execute a professional service agreement with Malcolm Engineering LLC for professional design services and construction administration for the renovation of the remaining areas of the Julian Carroll Convention Center, more specifically, the kitchen area and the old hotel showroom. Compensation shall be at the rate of 7.875% of construction costs and 6.3% of valued costs of any work not constructed, plus compensation for reimbursable expenses as outlined in the agreement.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? We've already talked about that. And this is just to, to get the design done for the, the extra space back there, the old showroom lounge. All right, City Clerk?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. We'll go into ordinances introduction. We do not vote on these. Commissioner Gault, please.
I think Tammy's trying to punish me here. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance fixing the levies and rates of taxation on all property in the city of Paducah, Kentucky, subject to taxation for municipal purposes and for school purposes for the period from July 1st, 2013 through June 30th, 2014, with the purposes of said taxes hereunder defined. Purpose: General fund of the city, real property 0.255, and these rates per hundred dollars. Personal property 0.390, motor vehicles and watercraft 0.390. School purposes: Paducah Junior College, real estate 0.017, personal property 0.017, motor vehicles and watercraft 0.031. The city of Paducah shall collect the following taxes for the Board of Education: Paducah Independent School District, real property 0.767, personal property 0.767, inventory 0.767. Total tax rate per $100 real property $1.039. Total tax rate per 100 personal property $1.174. Total tax rate per $100 inventory 0.767. Total tax rate per $100 motor vehicle and watercraft 0.421. Property taxes levied herein shall be due and payable in the following manner: In the case of tax bills which reflect an amount due of less than $530, the payment shall be due on November 1st, 2013, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November 30th, 2013. In the case of all other tax bills, payment shall be in accordance with the following provisions: The first half payment shall be due on November 1st, 2013, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November 30th, 2013. The second half payment shall be due on February 1st, 2014, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until February 28th, 2014.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Okay, we'll go on to Commissioner Rhodes, please.
Okay. I move that, try it again. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, approving a memorandum of understanding by and among the city of Paducah, Kentucky, and Tom Dunn Developer with respect to the roof stabilization of 203 Broadway in an amount up to $100,000, and authorizing the execution of various documents related to such a memorandum of understanding. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The city hereby approves a memorandum of understanding with Tom Dunn for the utilization of up to $100,000 of roof stabilization funds for stabilization of the roof of the structure located at 203 Broadway.
Second. Hi, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. The Commission passed the roof stabilization ordinance in August of this year. Immediately following the adoption of the ordinance, staff proceeded with requesting applications for roof stabilization. One qualified application was submitted by Tribecaian. This application is scheduled to go before the URCDA board on October 1st of 2013. The second part of the ordinance gave guidance for emergency roof stabilization projects. Shortly after the adoption of this ordinance, staff became aware of a building located at 203 Broadway, that's Michael's Hardware, being in need of emergency stabilization. Ray Pelly previously owned the building. Tom Dunn purchased the building at auction with intentions of renovating the first floor for retail and condominiums on the second through fifth floors. After Mr. Dunn's offer to purchase, he became aware of severe structural damage, including the partial collapse of the roof. Mr. Dunn, the developer, has acquired the services of a structural engineer to provide a work write-up for the structure located at 203 Broadway. The structural engineer inspected 203 Broadway last week and determined that immediate corrective work needs to occur as components of the building are failing. The work write-up will include the stabilization of structure and roof. Upon completion of the write-up, the developer will immediately proceed with acquiring the services of a building contractor and a roof contractor from the qualified roofing list to stabilize the building in compliance with the engineer's write-up. It is anticipated that total stabilization cost will be approximately $250,000. Upon completion of the stabilization, the city of Paducah will reimburse the developer up to $100,000. Actual costs will be determined by itemization of actual costs incurred by the developer for the roof stabilization project.
Thank you. Well, we all know that some of our very large buildings downtown need a lot of structural work done to them, and I know, I know that this one is also impacting an adjacent building, so it's critical that we stop the damage when we can, and the worst thing about any building is water getting into the building. So, it's, it's good to have Mr. Dunn, who has purchased this building, wants to do the renovation, will be spending quite a bit of money in addition to what we're helping with roof stabilization, increasing the quality and the price of property downtown. That's good.
I think it's also very critical that we had the foresight, the Commission had the foresight, to have this ordinance in place for when something comes along like this, we can act upon it if we want to.
Steve, doesn't that include that he guarantees that he's going to continue with the renovation of the building?
Not at this time, no. No, this is just for the stabilization of the structure and the roof structure.
So, there's no guarantee that he's going to finish out the building?
That's correct, but we will have, when we get done, is a structure that's stabilized and safe.
Which essentially impacts the others on the other side, too, as well?
Correct. At that point, if, if, in the future, at some point, it can be changed into condominiums or retail on the first floor.
And it's blocked now to keep, to understand?
I'm not sure, as of yesterday, it was not. Do you know if the fencing has happened at this point?
I do not.
Okay.
Will we be putting fencing in front of it?
As of this morning, he was contacting his contractor to have that done. I don't know if it's done today or not.
Okay. Well, but that's progress. I just brought it up because it's progress, and people oftentimes say what's going on there, but it's progress. Frame it positively.
Yes, I get that.
I think it's progress that, in a relatively short time, since this issue threat, if you will, sort of came before us at an elevated sort of way a year and a half ago on demolition permit, that you all now have policy in place, and as Steve pointed out, provided the budgetary means to respond. I would mention one caveat, however, most of the means here came from closeout of a former program into this one. Thankfully, going forward, though, I think we seriously need to consider, and I think you all are mindful of the need to consider increasing the appropriation into this program so that we can continue this effort to ensure the preservation of, of historic properties in the downtown area.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance amending Section 126-76 Sign Regulations of Chapter 126 Zoning or the Code of Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows: That the city of Paducah hereby amends Section 76G Sign Regulations of Chapter 126 Zoning of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Paducah to allow for apartment complex identification signage. All permitted apartment complex identification signs shall not exceed a height of eight feet from adjacent grade. Such signs shall be illuminated indirectly.
Second.
Steve?
I think it's, you know, pretty straightforward. This allows apartment complexes within the city to have some, some type of signage, both to advertise their apartment complex, but also as entrances and exits into their parking areas.
So, we don't have anything in place right now?
Not this time, we do not.
Like Black Oaks?
Yeah, most of the signs that department complexes are existing, nonconforming, mean they were put in 15, 20 years ago.
Okay, will they be similar in size, or?
Similar, yes.
Okay.
And the Planning Commission was?
Had a public hearing, made a positive recommendation to the city commission.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed zoning change from R2 low and medium density residential zone to an R4 high density residential zone for property located at 625 and 637 Hayden Avenue, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance so as to affect such rezoning. This ordinance is summarized as follows: Rezone property located at 625 and 637 Hayden Avenue from R2 low and medium density residential zone to R4 high density residential zone, and amending the Paducah zoning ordinance to affect such rezoning.
Second.
Yes, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, made a positive recommendation to the city commission. The findings of fact were that the proposed zoning is in compliance with a future land use plan as part of our comprehensive plan, so they made a positive recommendation to the city commission. The proposed use of the property at this time is for additional parking for Dr. Turnbull and Dr. Eichels.
Any discussion? Okay. Commissioner Gault, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to execute all documents relating thereto with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security for a 2013 port security grant. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The mayor is hereby authorized and directed to execute all documents necessary with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security to obtain a 2013 port security grant in the amount of $24,270 for the Riverfront Video Security Project Phase II for the purchase and installation of equipment to extend video surveillance coverage for the new boat ramp area located off North Sixth Street.
Second.
Assistant Chief?
Mayor, Commissioners, thank you all. As you all are well aware of, there at Six and North View, the line of sight because of the flood wall is a problem. Obviously, whenever you take anything on the other side of the river side of the flood wall, can't be seen from the dry side of it, so these cameras are hopefully going to prevent any type of vandalism, theft, so on and so forth, provide that extra level of security that's out there.
All right. Have you all been down to the, the work they're doing on the boat ramp?
I have. It's great. It's nice.
City Manager and I went down today, and it's really nice when you go up over the Greenway Trail, and it's a, a great view of the river from there. Be glad when we see that finished. Have a party there, right? Have a cookout for the city?
Fish fry.
Yeah, fish fry for the whole city. Thank you. Commissioner Rhodes?
Okay. I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance approving the execution of an online grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the U.S. Department of Justice for a 2013-2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Accountability Grant through the U.S. Department of Justice to be used by the Paducah Police Department and ratifying an interlocal agreement with Fiscal Court of McCracken County. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The city of Paducah hereby approves the execution of an online grant agreement and all documents relating thereto with the U.S. Department of Justice for a 2013-2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Accountability Grant in the amount of $13,382 to be used by the Paducah Police Department to purchase a variety of necessary support equipment. No local match is required. Further, the city approves the ratification of the interlocal agreement between the city and the county for the grant agreement approved.
Second.
Evening, Mayor, Commission, City Manager. Again, it is a no-match grant. It's bittersweet that we're only awarded $13,382. It's based off of our crime stats. It used to be about three times of what it is now, but the funding will be used to purchase rifles, bolt carriers for some of our rifles for training purposes, and trauma kits. Inside those trauma kits will be first aid equipment and tourniquets for our officers to use in case of emergency.
Okay. Any comments? Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, approving the Second Amendment to Tower Option and Lease Agreement by and between the city of Paducah and New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, successor in interest to Bell South Mobility LLC, to allow additional antennas and related equipment on a portion of the 800 MHZ tower located at 510 Clark Street, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky, and authorizes the mayor to execute said amendment. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The city of Paducah hereby approves the mayor to execute a Second Amendment to Tower Option and Lease Agreement with New Singular Wireless to allow additional antennas and related equipment to be installed on a portion of the 800 MHZ tower located at 510 Clark Street, Paducah, McCracken County, Kentucky.
Second.
Any discussion? Pretty cut and dried? Better service? Mr. Abraham, please.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Paducah, Kentucky, approving a memorandum of understanding for economic incentives to Superior Care Homes Incorporated towards sewer tap-on fee for the relocation of corporate offices and rehabilitation facility to the Paducah Commerce Park, and authorizing the mayor to execute said memorandum of understanding. This ordinance is summarized as follows: The Board of Commissioners does hereby approve the terms of the memorandum of understanding between the city and Superior Care Homes Incorporated with, which defines the city's commitment to give a cash grant in the amount of $20,000 as an economic incentive towards sewer tap-on fees. In accordance with such approval, the mayor of the city is hereby authorized and directed to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Superior Care Homes Incorporated, which sets forth the terms of the city's commitment with regard to economic incentives.
Second. Any comments? Good to have them building that great new facility out in Commerce Park and employing significantly more people than they have in their current location.
Nice addition.
City Managers' Report.
Thank you. Want to address the Riverfront project tonight on a couple of levels. One, I was, of course, not here when, when this project was conceptualized and public hearings held and, you know, input sessions and all, all that sort of thing. I've been here more during the implementation stage, and before I get into directional discussion with that project, I've asked Pam and Mark, our, our Public Works Director and our PIO, to prepare a little bit of information with respect to the functionality of that project that puts meaning to it above and beyond some of the buzz terms that have been used to refer to it, so I'd like Pam to take just a few minutes and do that, and then I'll address the question of where we go from here.
Mayor, Commissioners, I entitle this presentation back to basics. I've heard a lot of information out in the community. We've had a lot of technical discussions here in the commission meetings, so I've... We've had a lot of technical discussions here in the commission meetings, so I've entitled it "Back to Basics." And when you look at some of the terms that we've been using, we have focused so much on the creation, the form, and the function of the land mass that is under construction at the Riverfront. We've called it a mass fill. That is the title of the contract that we have with Matt Construction, a mass fill, to create the land mass, which is also a breakwater. Well, the breakwater talks about the function of this land mass. It's going to create a harbor on the downstream side that would be great for boating, for possibly a future marina, or just for the transient dock. We've also called it a bumpout, meaning that it's an area that it's extended from our Riverfront, like a peninsula. And then we've talked about the pilings, those 12, 36-inch diameter steel pilings that are going to be the support for a gangway, for the gangway that will lead to a transient dock. So, we've talked about a lot of big terms. Well, in summary, all those terms add up to it being a park. It's green space that's going to have river access. Don't want the community to lose sight of what this actually is. It's a park. It's open green space. And I'll show you some great pictures in just a few minutes. Going back to the 2007 Riverfront Master Plan, this was from November 2007, our MOU that we have with JJR regarding this phase, the Schultz Park Expansion. The quote that's in that master plan is, "The redevelopment of Schultz Park represents the inaugurating transformation of Paducah's entire Riverfront." That's why this is the first phase. It also listed several objectives for Schultz Park as well as the transient dock. The objectives were to create or provide the highest and best use of the Riverfront, to ensure community involvement in use of the river by maximizing visual and physical access to the river, develop a vibrant Riverfront that becomes an asset to downtown. We have an asset. We have the Riverfront. A lot of cities would be jealous to have our Riverfront. The goal is to make it even more of an asset for us. Provide an interface of commercial and recreational boating. Allow a place for boaters to stop and enjoy what we have downtown, our shops, our restaurants, just the beautiful scenery that we have here. Make it a place for public gathering and a celebration of Paducah. Think of all the events that we have downtown and in other parts of Paducah. How many of those events could be done down at this new park? It's new land. We're creating new real estate. And create momentum through the implementation of catalytic projects. This would be the beginning of more things to come. This was in the Schultz Park MOU, November 2007. That's what JJR visioned for our Riverfront, based on what the commission had put together for them. And if you go forward to 2012, on November 2nd, remember that wonderful infill ceremony that we had at Schultz Park with a barge in the background. Mark Thompson was there, and he talked about Schultz Park and this addition to it being the city's crown. He says, "Our dominion, our parks department, all of the City of Paducah needs a crown." Well, this park could be our crown. Well, here are some images. Our IT Department, Ben Peterson and Stephen Chino, have been taking some of the dimensions of the Riverfront Project and trying to make us some really cool schematics so that people can understand the size and the scale of this project. I've heard people in the public say, "It's only 40 feet wide," or, "How big is it?" It's hard to visualize because it's just a lot of stone down there. Well, this is the bumpout, the peninsula, whatever you want to call it. This is looking from the Ohio River way up in the air. See the Riverfront there? You can see the flood wall. The red rectangle to the left is the farmer's market, and then the green area is the new land that is being created. This is looking from the Ohio River toward downtown. You can see the green space and all the little dots that you see there. Ben and Stephen tried to put in some people playing and doing different things, people enjoying this green space. We were kind of playing around with some of the pictures. If you took the quilt museum and just picked up that size of a building, it would fit on this green space. So, the green area is about a good half-city block of just open green space. And this is, it's got walking areas, landscaping. That's the vision for this. You can see on the right there, the 12 pilings sticking up and the gangway, and then a future Marina Services Building and the transient dock. That's in future phases, but you can see how it all fits together in a vision there. Okay, this is getting a little bit closer. We're back looking from the city side toward the river, and you can see the people out there. If you look close up, they've really tried to put in a lot of detail. There's people on bicycles. There's a couple of people throwing balls back and forth to each other. You can actually see the ball being thrown. I mean, I know it's hard to see up there, but Ben and Stephen really tried to put in a lot of detail. You could go out there and play ball. It's just a nice, wide-open area. And then here's another view, looking from the river toward downtown. So, it shows the green area, the point of access where you could have that visual look at the river, enjoy the barges, enjoy so much of the downtown. So, I just wanted people to understand that the vision back from years and years ago, this is what is trying to be constructed. I think a lot of people in the public have kind of lost touch with that. They've been so in with all of the construction terms of mass fill and land mass and peninsula, bumpout. It's a park. It's also a park. So, this is just kind of a, just to give you some interesting pictures to take a look at. And now I'm going to turn it over to City Manager Jeff Peterson. Kind of where are we going?
Thank you, Pam. And we're fortunate we have such a talented group in our IT Department. Greg, thank you, and your folks for that. And I think a lot of the benefit of that, in addition to giving it meaning beyond the construction terms, is to get a better feel for the scale. It's bigger than one might expect. As we discussed a meeting or two ago, the current contract that we're under, the HUD contract, and the quantity of work that comprises both the installation of the pilings and rock is shortly to be completed, and we are without what we have found to be additional funds required to bring it to the elevation that is specified, and that is in our grant agreement with HUD. The council is needing and deserving, the commission is needing and deserving of additional information to ponder the important decision of how and when we move forward. Information is complex. It takes time. As it stands right now, we are at the end of a contract and really not in a position to take the amount of time I think we need to generate the information you need before we have to either amend the contractor's contract or cut the contractor loose. It's my feeling tonight that we need to effectively cut the contractor loose upon completion of this contract, which is just days away now, and take the time that's necessary to properly research and formulate a plan for moving forward with this project. A little bit of information that's developed over the last couple of weeks leads us to believe that there's been less settlement underneath the rock than what we might have thought, perhaps more in the area of a couple of feet rather than four or five feet. We've also developed, I think, at the staff level in consultation with HUD officials, a greater awareness and appreciation of the fact that if we are going to be discussing and possibly implementing design changes to this project, specifically affecting a lower elevation at project completion than what is in the funding contracts, then we really need to be taking that before the funding authorities and getting permission to do that, rather than do it and just expect that it's going to be acceptable. So, that's something also, just by way of example, that takes time. So, tonight, I'm recommending that at the completion of our current contract with Matt Construction, that we allow Matt Construction to move on and that we not give further consideration to amending their contract at this time. The reasons for that, resources to complete the project as designed are lacking and as of yet unidentified. And I believe the information that the City Commission needs to make the decision on that is not before them at the depth and breadth that they would like and that they need. Further, I believe that there's a need to review the entire project design with respect to existing funding. And when I say entire project design, I'm talking about the next phases beyond the current one, which is the construction of the mass fill, if you will. Here I go. But it's just rock at that phase, and the pilings. So, I think there's a strong yearning on everybody's part to pull this whole thing together, take a look at the resources in total, and make a determination of what we can do and where a shortfall might exist that we may need to address through some additional funding locally. And last, the means to accomplish that, it's my recommendation, and I have consulted with the Chairman of PRDA, that this project be referred to the Paducah Riverfront Development Authority for review, and the conduct of the necessary planning consultations that are necessary to bring forth recommendations to you at a later date for project completion. I'm not in a position tonight to suggest the timeline there, but I think we're all generally aware, there's a year here of what was going to be settlement, and there will be some post-construction settlement. But because of that, we have some time here to put to the review and planning process and bring before you a recommendation at a later date that hopefully is more complete and exhaustive in its resourcefulness than what we've been able to do in relatively short time that we've had to respond to this funding issue at this point.
Any comments?
I think that's an awesome recommendation. We obviously have gotten to the, this project has gotten to the point where everybody is aware that the funds are not there for completion where we originally thought it may have been. I think as elected officials, we, I'm pretty sure you all have gotten letters, emails from citizens concerned about where we were going with this project. And meeting with the City Manager this morning, my comments were pretty much exactly what he just said. I feel a lot more comfortable getting the information that we don't have, looking back on the project. It's interesting how life sets things up for you. My wife and I was recently faced with a situation where we really wanted to do this thing, a different thing, and I really wanted to do it. I really did. But looking at the numbers and looking at what it would have required commitment-wise, we're not doing that. So, we're looking at different options, and I think this is where we are as a commission. And I think that's what our folks would love for us to do, just get more information, look at this, and if it's, if funds are available to do what we want to do, great. If it's not, then we put a fresh set of eyes on this and do what we can afford to do and make the best of it.
I agree, a fresh set of eyes, and I think that kind of stepping back away from it and gathering more information is going to be beneficial. I know you serve on PRDA. How do you feel up to the task?
What I was going to say, as the City Commission's representative on PRDA, I'm pleased that you are looking for that board to be more involved with this. I know that they've been, we've been talking about it today some, and I believe that there's interest from the PRDA board to do that, and I think it's appropriate. Personally, I'm, you know, I'm still committed. I want to see our Riverfront developed in some way, but I'm glad that we're taking pause to look at it. I feel a little bit disappointed, but also relieved in a way that we're going to look at this and make the right decision.
I know Chairman Brockenbauer, I believe, is in the back. Let's see if he can come up.
We'll put you on the hot seat here.
This is the hot seat right here. That's not it.
That's not it.
He just said, "That's not hot." This is the hot seat.
It's just a lot of pressure.
Well, that's, Commissioner, that's one of our jobs, is to take a big transformative project and maybe take it out of the political cycle a little bit and take you off the hot seat. You know, that's one of the visions of PRDA is to take on controversy and not necessarily feel like we get peppered with the emails that you were referring to. You know, we, our job is to make projects like this apolitical, I think. And I would also add, Commissioner Wilson, that we have strong support from the rest of the board members. This kind of came up pretty quickly for us, and I had to contact everybody by email. We have two commissioners out of the country, so it was tough, but everyone with whom I've communicated had strong support for us taking on this project. They think it's, we all believe that taking that deep breath is the right thing to do, and we're the right people to help you take that deep breath, and they're eager to put the fresh set of eyes on the project.
Great. Thanks, Bruce. Thanks to the board.
And I just have one quick question for Rick. Doing so, and I guess you're the one to ask, just because you've worked hand-in-hand, we do have the time and won't jeopardize the grant money. I want to make sure, I just want to ask that question.
This board will have to go to work immediately for that. The big grant, which is a boating infrastructure grant that comes through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife, through the Kentucky Fish and Wildlife, is on the clock, is started, and that will be September the 15th, excuse me, September of 2015, that we will have to have those monies spent. So, with the PRDA board, we'll need to go to work immediately with bringing them up to the information that's at hand regarding the obligations associated with the permits and the obligations associated with the funding behind this, the FHWA money, and also the boating infrastructure grant as well. So, time is of the essence here, but this will be something that we should be going to work on immediately to make those deadlines.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're down to Commissioners' comments, and I'm not a Commissioner, but anyway, it should say Commissioner and Mayor comments.
Write it in.
Write it in.
It's called the Board of Commissioners, I think. I think you're covered in that.
Are you going to report on the DC trip?
I won't let you do that.
Oh, no, I was going to let you do that.
I'm just going to talk about my shirt.
Well, before you all start on that.
I'm not talking about my shirt.
I just want him to pull his sport coat off, so he just has to sit here while you all talk with his shirt showing. That's all I'm asking.
I wondered what it said.
You know what? I am a man of word.
Oh.
You guys show up for this.
Sooner or later, I'm going to get mine.
Oh, yeah. You're going to get it.
We've had this, for you, we've had a friendly little wager, and the loser has to wear the other's shirt every year, so.
I didn't realize that Commissioner Galt was a cheerleader at Mayfield when she was in high school. Once I found that out, it was on, I thought. This is like the fifth, I don't know. I don't want to talk about it. I just, there it is.
So, there you go. I just wanted him to feel it for a little while. Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I just, I would also like to say, this Team Paducah, and I would like to thank all of my Commissioners up here, we don't always agree on everything, but I want all of you to know that I appreciate you and the work that you do for the city. So, I'm going to talk about my shirt now. I got the idea to raise $2,000 for a team to paddle in the dragon boat races to honor and remember breast cancer patients. Being a breast cancer survivor myself, I felt like it was important. So, a friend of mine who works with me is also a breast cancer survivor. She and I just about split it. She raised about $1,000, I raised $1,000. So, Commissioner Galt's going to be a paddler, and Sandra is going to work in the tent.
My daughter's going to be a paddler.
Yes, yes. So, the fire department has really stepped up. I've been really proud of them. Barry Carter's done a great job. We've got some police that's going to be paddling, and just from all the different departments in the city. So, it is Team Paducah, and Team Paducah is going to hit a home run against breast cancer. So, our theme is baseball, so we all have a number. And the drummer, we have a drummer on the dragon boat teams, and they're supposed to keep us paddling in sync, and it's a fireman that's going to dress up as a girl softball player. So, that'll be good. So, we should have a lot of fun and hopefully win the race. So we should have a lot of fun and hopefully win the race. Barry said he wants to win the race, so. Each team does have to have eight females, so I think maybe we have a little bit over eight females on the team.
You have Barry, is Barry?
Barry Carter.
So he's the guy dressing up?
No, no, not him. Don't spread that rumor.
Oh, just freaking sure. Okay.
We have not been given the identity of that person yet.
All right.
I think it's a secret.
All right, but it's not Barry.
And this weekend also, right after the Dragon Boat Races, at sunset is the lighting of the neon lights at the Coca-Cola plant. And I'm sure lots of people can remember those lights from years ago. They were so beautiful. So it'll be fun to have that back again with the new Independence Bank. And that whole intersection's going to look great. They have purchased the building across the street, Independence Bank, so I think they'll clean that little corner up, too.
Great.
So hopefully someday we'll have a roundabout there. That's what I'd like to see. And we did have a great trip to Washington.
We had 36 people from the community that went last week. We had excellent meetings with Secretary of Energy, Ernie Moniz, as well as Congressman Ed Whitfield, Senators Paul and McConnell. They all heard our message. We're all in sync of what we want and that we're not going to go down without a fight, that we are continuing to, as I've said, is our tagline, we are fighting for our community, which is really true. And so thank you to the city for your involvement, as well as the county. They were very involved, as well as a lot of community leaders throughout here. So I know it's not over, but we'll have to keep fighting. But we were told if we're not there in the seat, other communities are, so it's up to us to continue to keep that fight going.
And we talked about more than just the closure of the plant out here, some of the other priorities that we have as a community.
We did. You talked about the flood wall on several different occasions, and the judge talked about how important that was for McCracken County as well.
And we did get, I think, some good news with the water bill that's been passed for our Riverfront flood wall.
Right.
Sure, coming up.
Mayor Commission, with the Word of Bill, Water Resources Development Act, both the Senate version and the House version adopted the chief's report, which is the chief of the Army Corps of Engineers, whereas our project has been authorized at $20 million. And then the only thing we'll be looking for is appropriations. So both, it's a bipartisan bill with both the House and the Senate version of that bill having our project in it as a whole. So it looks like that will be passed on our behalf. So then, the only thing that we'll be looking for in the future, and that was the major hurdle we had to get over, but anything that we'll be looking for in the future will be appropriations bill to incrementally fund portions of the project over time. So that was 15 years of work.
Good. I know that was a relief to you.
Yes, yes, very much so. But boots on the ground and the project getting done is the next piece.
Right. Thank you.
So, thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
I've got one thing.
Make it quick.
As we started at 5:30 this evening, 38 years ago, Johanna Comisak and I got married, and I just want to thank her in a nice way. I could be with her tonight for dinner or some festive occasion 38 years hence, just to thank her in a public way. So thanks, Johanna.
Well, I got to give you a hand on that, man.
On a Wednesday afternoon.
I love romantic men.
Our picture is posted on her Facebook account.
All right. Let's move on. We have an executive session tonight. Public comments, any public comments? Okay, we have an executive session tonight. Commissioner Gault, I think you have that?
I do. I move that the board go into closed session for discussions of matters pertaining to the following topics. Issues which might lead to the appointment dismissal or disciplining of an employee as permitted by KRS 61.8101F, and a specific business, a specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.8101G.
Second.
City Clerk?
Mr. Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye. Okay, we will be coming back out of executive session also. We made a motion to come out.
Oh, we had to vote on that out here?
Yep.
Okay. To reconvene?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, who made the motion to reconvene?
Sandra.
Who seconded?
Richard.
Second.
Give me the call the roll?
Please.
Okay. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Who has the motion?
I have it. Upon the recommendation of the city manager, the Board of Commissioners of the city of Paducah ordered that the personnel changes on the attached list be approved.
Second.
Can you unhook it? Somebody needs to read who it's going to be.
Right. You have that, too, Richard?
I do.
And the decision is?
Assistant Chief Brendan Barnhill.
Okay.
All right. Roll call.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Rhodes?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Kayler?
Aye.
Okay, so meeting adjourned?
Meeting's adjourned.
Okay.
Okay.